I'm tripping over something.
Yeah.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. Correspondence.
We have four pieces of correspondence. First one is a memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of Occupational Education for Lower Primary Valley Career Education Center regarding the student of the month. There are no Long Meadow students. We have an email from Mr. Stephen Gazillo dated October 28th. Thank you, Mr. Clark, for providing a tour of the Long Meadow High School. We have an email from Mr. Gregory Jones dated October 28th regarding the condition of a junket at Long Meadow High School. And we have a letter from Mr. Steven Crosby of the Massachusetts Gaming Commission dated November 5th confirming receipt of the Long Meadow School Committee's resolution.
Thank you. Seeing no visitors, we move on to the school committee comments. Done?
I'd like to offer my congratulations to the Adult Center Director Emily Perkins and Veteran Service Officer Anthony Lawrence for their very fine work in support of the five-kilometer Wounded Warrior Walk and Run on Saturday the 9th of November. And we were representing, the school committee was represented by myself, Michael Clark, and Kim King.
Second half. Really well, really great day. Really well attended. And there was some good food after. Anybody else? Any other comments? I do want to offer congratulations to the Long Meadow High School volleyball team and field hockey team who both won Western Mass and are making their way to states. In fact, I believe field hockey is playing now. So, we may, we may be looking at the score at some point during the meeting. But, great. And I also want to congratulate Leif on the Great Gala. I don't think we've met since the Leif Gala. Have we? So, congratulations to Leif. It was a fantastic night. And I think the early reporting is that they raised a lot. So. Here's hoping.
Technically.
Technically. So, great. Old business. We've got no old business. So, I'll move on to administrators' reports. Superintendent Doyle?
To start with, the kindergarten committee has sent out a survey to parents in order to solicit their input. We have returned, have had returned two hundred.
Two hundred and three.
Results, which is absolutely amazing to get that higher return. We are having an evening with parents, a forum on Wednesday, November 20th, 2013, at 7:00 PM at the Glenbrook Auditorium.
No. It's at the BCT.
Oh, it's BCT. Thank you. Business Teachers Center. Come right here to Long Meadow High School, the Bliss Road entrance, and it's straight ahead on the left. The Leif Gala was sensational. It was unbelievable. The team of people that put together quite an extraordinary event from all of the items that were put out for, for raffle or for bidding, as well as just the food and the venue. Kara Crandall is one of our middle school English teachers, and she was chosen as one of 26 participants from across this country to attend the Memorial Library Summer Session in Holocaust Education. There have been more than 200 educators trained so far, and we congratulate Kara on being chosen to participate in this high-level training. Next, we also had Melissa Condon, a high school Spanish teacher, receive a grant from the Spanish Embassy to study in Spain this past summer. These types of programs really benefit our students, and we have intangible results because teachers go and increase their fluency. As Michael said, and John said, the Wounded Warriors race was highly successful. We opened up various parking lots, and we are appreciative to all the people that participated to help, help raise funds for the Wounded Warriors. The principal's hiring committee continues. They met again today. The semifinals have been narrowed down and scheduled to be interviewed. We remain on schedule for hiring a new, new high school principal by January of 2014. The, the MASs Educational Partnership Conference, Kelly Gange, Marsha Har, Kathy Rosato, and I attended a conference, and they were talking about how to build partnerships and how to have successful negotiations as we get through things like teacher conferences and the new park tests. It was a good day, and we spent some time just talking and cheering ideas. MASc, MASs had its annual conference last year. Michael Clark, Russell Johnson, Gordon Smith, and I presented on having difficult conversations. Our, excuse me, our own Liz Bone was our facilitator writing out Long Meadow's representation on this panel.
Fantastic. Any questions for Marie?
I'd also like to congratulate Kara Crandall. I had her as a teacher. She was an amazing teacher.
Good. I want to know that.
Great. All right. What have I been up to in your school committee chair update? Well, like Marie said this last week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, I was on the Cape with John and Liz Newey and Diane for the Mass Association of School Committees Meeting, our annual conference, I should say. It was very, there was a lot of great sessions, very educational. The first thing that I went to and participated in was I was introducing and facilitating for John Doria, who is a former principal and president of Teachers 21, which is a organization out of Boston. And he's very well respected in the mass education community. So, he gave a really great presentation, and I was happy to be able to be a part of that. Additionally, I was able to work with Marie and Gordon Smith and Russell, Russell Johnson from West Springfield to present on difficult conversations. I think it was very successful and, from what I heard, the most beneficial of the day. So, that's good. We also heard some very interesting keynote presentations, one on school violence from a criminologist at Northeastern University, as well as some other interesting seminars on school financing. And I also sat in on one for collective bargaining for a little bit with our own lawyer, Liz Valario, who I almost think I didn't need to go to that because why go when we have her? But, I mean, I learned a lot from her. I've already sat through it once, so it was good to sit through it again. Do you guys have anything to add to that?
Well, I agree with you on the value of attending these.
Yeah.
And I thought the one on school violence was very well done.
Yeah.
There's an excellent article in this past weekend's Wall Street Journal on that same topic.
Oh, really?
Which I'd recommend to anyone.
I think it's also nice to be able to network. We were able to meet people like Ginny Tate, Liz Valario, other superintendents to find out what's happening throughout the state. So, it's a valuable opportunity, both in sessions and out of them.
And I, you know, and personally, I had a really great opportunity to, to, you know, spend time with and meet with Devin Sheehan, who's on the Holyoke School Committee. He's our MASc rep for Division Five, which is our division. And he expressed interest in holding a division meeting here in Long Meadow, and, you know, I told him we're happy to oblige that. And I think it's important that, you know, we do get more involved. I know that not many of us actually attend a lot of these meetings, but, you know, it's really great to meet with these people, share resources, share, you know, share experiences and come out as better school committee members because this professional development, which is really what it was for three days, is, you know, it's so beneficial to us, I think. And the more we're able to attend, you know, the better. I also got to spend some time with Jake Aldair from the Ludo School Committee, who's now the vice president of the MASc. So, we've got a good, good connection there. And that is about that for that. What else did I do? I also, today was my first time, I am now the advisor to the Long Meadow High School Politics Club. So, I met, we had our first meeting, we had a nice little debate and discussion, and it's nonpartisan, nonpartisan, no slants. But they did elect a majority leader and minority leader because they do have their own slants. So, that was fun, and we're going to be meeting regularly. They're going to be trying to get some, some speakers in and, you know, doing voter registration drives and really trying to get a more politically-involved populace, which is good. So, happy to be a part of that. And I think that's all I have. One other thing. I will be meeting next Wednesday night with Marie Angelides. Steve Weiss and Steve Metz. Steve Weiss is the chair of Community Preservation, and Steve Metz is the chair of Capitol Planning to kind of take what we voted on in the last meeting and let them know exactly how important it is and drive that home for us so that when Capitol does actually make the recommendations to the select board, they know that we make no bones about what we voted on. There should be no question to these chairs about what priorities what, and hopefully we, you know, do a good job of defending that, or hopefully I do. So, that'll be, I think that's just a cat's a little off the book me. So. And that's about it for me. Joseph?
All right. I was also going to mention the new politics club. You pretty much covered that.
Yes, I did. Took all the stuff away.
The, the life skills department at the high school, which is new this year, is doing great work. They're actually opening a new cafe on Fridays starting in December. So, I was really impressed with that. On the topic of the electronic report cards that I'm trying to get started, I had a great conversation with our, our email conversation with Mr. Rurrenda, and he said he was very happy that this was going to be taken up. And me and Mr. Dunkley are currently working on setting a time to meet with, with him to figure out how to proceed. If anyone would like to sit on, sit in on that meeting, we'd be happy to have more input. We're also looking to see, me and Mr. Dunkley are going to be discussing who else should be sitting in, more, maybe some more students, more parents, more teachers.
Good.
I've set a personal goal to finish the parking fees report that I discussed at our last school committee student advisor meeting by the end of December. So, I'll be starting work on that soon. We recently had a fire drill, and we, for the second time, implemented our new system of having different classrooms meet in groups near the grassy gutter end of the high school, and it worked very well. The visitors from Japan are now with us at the high school, and they gave a great presentation, as they always do, about their city, and they had pictures from the superintendent's trip. That was fun. And at the student government, SVAC Committee, we are currently working on ways to improve class communication with parents. So, just some things that are going on at the high school.
You just reminded me that I actually went to that Saturday night here with the Japanese delegation that's visiting the school. They did a whole presentation in front of their host families, and it was pretty, pretty cool.
Not so too.
Yeah. So.
Long Meadow News was covering it almost like hour by hour on Facebook.
Oh, yeah, Hope was there.
It was, I thought it was great because I couldn't be there, so I was.
Yeah, it was very cool, and I completely blinked on that, so it's my reminder.
And any questions, as always?
Fire drills, Joe. Do we have sweepers? We have sweepers when they leave the rooms, and who checks the hallways and bathrooms and all that stuff?
I believe, I believe that Mr. Dunkley and Mr. Landers sweep. They go through and make sure that everyone is, is out. That's right.
Yeah, we get reports on the walkie-talkie out when they've cleared a hallway.
Okay. So, go into the manager's rooms and all that stuff, make sure that.
And people in the area are assigned to the bathroom.
I'm just questioning because I know that used to be a big deal when I was corporate, like not losing somebody, you know, somewhere.
Right.
To make sure it's clean.
Yeah, they, they divvy it up, and then they report to the assistants who reports to the principal.
Okay.
Yeah, and they implemented a new system in the new school. The old school was kind of like a little messy of a system, but the new system is that a different, like basically by type of class, they have different meeting spots, like right on the edge of grassy gutter, and teachers know where to go, and they bring their shoes there, and they check in a little bit more efficiently.
Thanks.
Great. Anything else for Joseph?
That is all.
Any questions for him? All right. Moving right along to the finance report. We have in front of us, Finance Subcommittee made a recommendation, so I'm going to hand it over to Jim.
Before I get to the recommendation, maybe cover a couple of things. We met on the 5th, I think, at 10:00 AM. During that meeting, it was Tom, Liz, John, Kelly, Marie, myself, and Peter Landen, Landon. And wanted to get to this recommendation. One of the things that was covered was Kelly did a presentation which she came ready to present again, but I think I'm going to try to do her some justice here and help her out. But she really presented the idea of having in-class libraries from K through, well, K through five, thanks. So, they look like this up here, or back there, I mean, where they have a lot of different books and stuff available to people so that they, the children during free reading time and stuff can go up and get books that are appropriate to their reading level, read them, and be guided by the teacher as things goes on. So, we talked a lot about that. So, it provides, some of the key points that were brought up is it provides access to reading all day long versus going off to the library at specific times. The volume and time reading hopefully benefits the students quite a bit. They can read more and read more different varied products. The core library is established for each grade. So, you end up, when you, when one of these libraries for, you know, grade one, two, three, it'd be different for each grade, and it covers a wide range of capabilities. And so, so it's not only for the nominal reader, if you will, it's for those that are a little bit more challenged or those a little bit more proficient in reading. It would cover those different spans. And it provides a little bit more balanced training in the literacy initiative going on. And what we're trying to do, or the school's trying to do here, is really provide independent reading really in the order of 90 minutes a day. So, it's a lot of different time, you know, and it can be chunked up in different times, but a total of 90 minutes per day. And when, from an impact perspective, I'm talking to Kelly, we're saying, hey, well, when do we actually see the results of this? Because some things have a long timeline here. She felt that it would be actually almost immediate, certainly on the vocabulary side, and within a year on other, you know, reading effectiveness side. So, we should be able to see them in the test results, in anything, any other results we've taken a look at. We do a lot of different types of testing around here, so hopefully we'll see an uptick in one of those pieces of data as we go along. So, to really provide all of that to each class through each school, it comes out to a total of roughly $67,000. And, and as part of the finance subcommittee, myself, Liz, and John voted to recommend that here to the full committee for approval. This money would come out of the school choice fund, and it would bring, because it's a really one-time, a one-time purchase. I am assuming, although we didn't cover it, is that upkeep, you know, replacing the torn books and stuff like that, we can do fairly easily as we go through. So, anyway, that's the, that's the perspective. Any questions before I make a recommendation?
Do you have anything to add, Kelly?
I don't think so. I'm sure you do.
You could present as you want, but I was sort of, I move on to the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approve the use of $67,000 from the school choice fund for the purchase of classroom libraries for grades K through five as presented.
Second.
The motion and the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion carries. Seven oh.
All right. One other, thank you. One other thing we covered in the Finance Subcommittee meeting was Peter Landon had came in and presented the finance guidelines for the school system, ASBO, and don't ask me, I keep writing it down, I keep forgetting what it stands for.
Association of School Business Officials.
Thank you very much. All right. So, from criteria and best practices of finance, at the end of the day, I think we're about 98% there, but we couldn't quite close, so I didn't recommend that he come here yet. The, the sticking points for us right now are a projection of the cost structure going forward for three to five years, and mainly centering around, well, how do you project those of the union costs, you know, or labor negotiations that we have not yet done? How do you deal with that? The other was really the perspective of, of online versus offline. Do we need to print copies out, or we can put them online in a file area that says, you know, onto the school website, town website, into the school website, that would really point the finances and link them together? Peter was against that. I personally was for it, so that was a disconnect. And then the perspective of how accurate do you need to be, and what are the impacts of projections? If at the end of the day, you project something out two, three years, and you find out that you're wrong, how do you deal with that? Because, I mean, the people are going to plan around use of that data.
Right.
And so, how do you do with that? So, so we left, or he left with us saying that we'd like some more information. Again, we're 98% there, in my opinion, less those key items. And what is on the table right now is Ned Steiger would like to talk to me one-on-one, if that's acceptable to the group here, to be kind of work through these items, and then if we find some, some common ground, we can come here to the, to the full subcommittee, to the full committee, I'm sorry. And it would just save the subcommittee from meeting some night to go through it one more time. So, I would represent us, you know, just a conversation, see if we can at least bring some clarity to these issues, where the sticking points are, and then have him come in and present to us, if that's okay. That's where we ended up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, does anybody have anything to add before I? I don't have an issue with, with you meeting with him offline. What, if he comes, that means that he'll be coming without a finance committee recommend, finance subcommittee recommendation, correct?
If, after that, we would, right, I would personally say, I talked to him, we think we're on board. I actually do, again, from a committee structure basis, somebody goes through a subcommittee and doesn't make it through, normally doesn't get to a full committee. That's the way, normally, doesn't get there from here, right? It gets stuck in the subcommittee. I'm hoping we don't have to play that game. I'm hoping we can actually see some rationality to it. And then at the end of the day, make a recommendation, right? I mean, and if we're only going to make a 98% there, put everything in, Marie and Tom and us, we've already agreed that we would create a common website, you know, a link in our website area that would tie everything together, at least the things that we have. And again, the sticking points are, what do you do with the projection? How do you deal with the accuracy of that projection at the end of the day?
Right.
And what does online versus offline really mean to everybody?
You know, it seems, it seems to me like, you know, those questions that you've brought up are the same questions that we've been asking since it was brought to you and I back in September. You know, and I do hope that you're able to get clarification because, you know, if, if they're not able to provide answers to this committee about, you know, restructuring the way we do business, I mean, even though it's not a huge restructuring, but, I mean, but drafting a five, a three or five-year projection, you know, we're going to have a community that's going to hold us to those numbers and expect that we meet those projections. And that is, you know, obviously some, something that we'd be doing and happy to do, but those things that, those things like collective bargaining agreements benefit increases. How do we, how do we plan for that? And that's the question that I want an answer to, and a question that I haven't gotten a good answer to yet. And I know you're on the same page with that.
Right. No, I agree fully. It's, it's a matter of a lot of conversation, and people have, I won't, I guess I'm going to use the word bad word, but flippantly, but it's really not flippantly, but very casually say, don't worry about it, it's an estimate.
Right.
But.
Don't worry about it, but it makes up the biggest chunk of my budget.
Estimates at the end of the day are very meaningful, and, and so people will plan around them, and we need to have some idea that what we say going forward, you know, is something we're going to be able to go achieve. So, I'll talk to him, and we'll see what we get, and then come here. If there really is a significant disconnect.
Right.
I might come back here again without him and say, hey, I don't think we, I recommend going forward, but let's see what we get.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
And otherwise, because those took up a fair amount of time, we end up delaying anything as far as budget updates and things like that, which we'll catch at our next meeting, which I think is the 21st or something there, 21st. Right.
And if I can add to your report a little bit, in everybody's package should be the Town Manager's Budget Directive, which I know you have not discussed yet, but it's important the committee, at least, you know, takes a look at it. Basically, as we learned at our joint committee meeting back in October, town's expecting $683,000 shortfall. The town manager has recommended that budgets for next year be funded at a level service amount to include contractual increases, which means that we are including in our number at this point in time the 800-plus thousand dollars in steps, colas, and other contractual salary increases. Now, my caveat to that is that, because there's always a caveat. My caveat is that eventually, you know, the we at this point know that we will be negotiating with the select board to figure out how to bridge that $683,000 gap. Additionally, we have no idea what the select board's capital priorities are going to be for this year. I'm hoping, and this is my commentary, but I'm hoping that they choose to not fund another drainage project out of the operating budget because that tends to put the squeeze on us and other. us and other departments. But right now, the, and I should also say that the select board did not actually vote on this directive. They chose not to vote on giving a directive and left it to the town manager to give a directive. And so this is just directly from the town manager without the select board's approval, and they are very comfortable with it being that way, which is the first time that I've seen that happen in my time here. So that's base.
Jim? I'm sorry, I just have to ask a question about that. Structurally in this town, and John helped me because you're more familiar with it sometimes than I am, but, but the town manager works for the select board, yes?
Oh, yeah.
So, so if the town manager produces a directive.
Yeah.
It, would we not by default assume that the select board agrees with that directive? Or, or if they did not, let me reverse it, they did not, you know, you come back and say, you're going to change this?
Well, from my understanding of, do you want to?
I, I'm not too sure how it works. I mean, I'm just asking kind of a question of.
The way that it's happened in past years is that the town manager will deliver a directive to the select board, and they will vote to agree to that. They chose not to vote. They chose to just say, you're the town manager, you take it.
Yeah, okay. So that can send different messages, right?
Well, I hate to be skeptical about what they're trying to pull, but.
Please.
It looks like cat and mouse game again. And they'll let the town manager go forward, and then they'll say, well, I didn't vote for that. I'm, I'm very dubious about this proposal by Mr. Landon. I mean, the finance committee is not elected by the people of this town. We are, and so is the select board. And for the finance committee to come in and tell us how we ought to be doing business is, to me, an act of arrogance. And we weren't the problem last year, it was the select board that was the problem. And, you know, it's that old slogan, if it's not broke, why do we have to fix it? So I think we should just go on with what we did last year and move forward, and, and let the select board catch up with us. That's my attitude.
Yeah, I guess, John, my question was more because the, I am concerned actually from a different perspective of what you just said. Hey, the select board chose, for whatever reason, not to vote.
Mm-hmm.
And that, in, in some sense, to play part in creating this directive in that sense, right? I chose not to vote on it, therefore I kind of avoid the whole issue. So, so when we go and create our budget, using the process we did last year, because I agree, we'll go through the same detailed process, because it was very detailed around what we could do. When we create that, at the end of day, and we meet some version of whatever this says, what's it mean? Because then they can vote and say, yeah, we didn't mean that. We actually don't like this directive and want something else. It seems, it doesn't seem the right process, you know, from the perspective of how things should flow.
Well, I agree with you. If they support that, they should take ownership for it. But right now, they're letting the town manager pull the directive and deliver the directive, and they're free to choose as they wish to back off from whatever part they wish.
I mean, I guess, I guess my, to interject, I think it's a dangerous game for them to play, if that's the case, because, you know, part of the directive is that these preliminary and supplemental budgets that they're requesting, and they're requesting supplemental budgets for additions to, to that baseline budget, is due by December 6th. So at this point, they're leaving department heads with less than, what, three, three and a half weeks to come up with a budget to submit, or at least, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know how they can, I, I mean, and I know that they can change their mind, and I, we've seen it, but I don't know how they can do that to, you know, as, as easily as, as we anticipate them doing, just because at this point, you know, the directive's out there, it's, you know, it's been given to department heads, there's an expectation. But I agree with you that, you know, I have a concern that politics, as usual, will rear its head and, you know, will be defending a budget we built to directive, and, you know, we might run into opposition that says, well, we never agreed to directive. So you're, you're absolutely right about that.
Yeah, that's my concern. It's, we can follow, we can follow this, I'm just saying, it just, it sends a different message, just, you know.
It does.
I don't know if they're listening to us or not, but if they are listening.
They'll know next door.
Maybe they go, maybe look at the slide, they had to say, maybe we ought to take a stand and tell people what we're really thinking. I mean, that's, you know, in any case, we'll go work the rest.
The only other thing, there is a, a big, looking at the directive, there is a big chunk of the ASBO that we do need to follow to comply with the directive. Part of it being organizational chart, part of it being a list of expenditures and, you know, part of the way that we put, show this to them. My, my main, you know, I've got some questions. Tom and I, you know, spoke privately about some of those questions, and, you know, I'm waiting to get some answers to them. Like, one of my questions is, you know, do we need to supply a supplemental budget if our net increase is, you know, at zero? Do we need to supply a supplemental budget if, say, we have budget additions that, you know, we subtract with? I'm sorry, I forgot to strike that there. Reduce items and then we add them, do we have to supply supplemental budget?
No, it should be a level, what you're saying is, it's level service, right? So if everything else is level service, let me make something up. Everything's level service, well, that's, so, however we lost a teacher, but we added a different program.
Right.
Well, financially, you might be level, but you're not level service necessarily, because you added a service. So do you have to go back and say?
That's, that was what I was trying to say.
I created a whole new thing, right? Even though it's within my budget. So my recommendation actually is this, is that we take our level service budget as it projects out with our negotiated settlements and everything else. If we feel there is real reason to add and subtract programs, when they fit, if they fit within the budget, because you're adding and subtracting programs, I do think we ought to make it clear that we're moving, we are adding, we're subtracting programs, and here's where they are, and they're netting out to the same total. But they provide the service we need to the community and to the students at large. And hold it at that, I mean, it just.
Hold what?
The, I think that would be fair, and it's open. At the end of the day, our budget's totally open by line item anyway, right?
Right, you know, we have nothing to hide.
So people know what they're doing. The organizational charts and things like that should be pretty straightforward, it's just a matter of, you know. Organizational charts in my world, you can, used to be, you can make them without names if you want, because organizations don't change, people do.
Okay.
So you could just say, here it is, you know, that person, you know, happens to be, you know, Kelly at the time, but it could be somebody else, right? So, so there's a slot that says, I've got an assistant principal, assistant superintendent, here's what they're doing. If you want to know a name, I'll put a name in there. I mean, that way, it's, it's there, it's correct all the time, essentially from an organization, and if we need to have on the web an active link toward, you know, changing people, we could say, that person today is this, you know, because people change all the time, like I say, titles and people change all the time. Makes it more real.
Makes it easier.
It makes it easier, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So, more to come, I guess is, you know, at this point, more to come, and we'll see. Anything else on finance? Any other questions? All right, SBC update.
There's been nothing.
We haven't met since, since our last meeting.
Right.
Okay. Legislative update.
Thursday.
They're not in session, so there's nothing to report.
Green team.
Um, nothing to report.
Okay. School club is doing a lot. Operations.
Let's put it off, right?
It is. We are going to have to re-approach the town manager at this point, because town meeting voted to not fund the DPW study, organizational study. So at this point, we're just waiting for the new field guy to come on, and that should be in the next month and a half.
After, after the holidays or something.
But it's not too early to start the ball, you know, talking to Stephen about this. So, seal. Collaborative.
It's pretty much routine. We are still undergoing collective bargaining with the drivers' union. That's new. But they have nothing to report to us yet, so it's pretty much standard operating procedure out there.
Okay. Middle school working group?
Nothing.
Policy sub? Well, we got a, other action items, is there anything else you want to put in there?
Um, the action items on the.
To update the.
Purchasing goods?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can hold off on that for a minute. Under policy, I do want to add that we do need to, and I've started to initiate this, we need to review the social media policy per policy. So I don't think, so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to meet with Kevin and Marie and Tom and Kelly about it, and then we'll bring it to the committee if there's any changes that need to be made. Naming.
I don't think we need to have it on the list anymore as the memory tree is up and operational.
Okay.
Do you know when the leaflets might be added?
They sent the first two away to be engraved, so that we can get it started, but as soon as we get a significant number, we'll keep sending them in. But right now, we'll even send in small numbers, but those two should be back.
Cool.
And kindergarten committee.
We put out a survey for parents to, and community members to respond, asking some simple questions, five questions. The link for the survey is on the district's website and should be on all three elementary school websites. The next meeting, the parent forum is Wednesday, November 20th, here at the BTC, like Marie had said, coming in through the Bliss Road entrance, to give an update on curricular changes in kindergarten that are going to be forthcoming, to discuss the results of the survey, and to discuss budgetary implications. So we appreciate, you know, all who have filled out the survey and given us comments about half of the people who have filled it out have left comments for us that we are going to be reviewing prior to the meeting on the 20th.
Any questions for Janet? I would just encourage as many committee members as possible to attend.
The forum, I attended the last one, John attended the last one, Katie attended the last one. So it's very informative. Gives us a good idea of where the community is on this, so. All right, Liz, policies.
Can I throw a question out there? I hope this isn't a curveball, but how many communities in Massachusetts currently offer full-day taxpayer-funded kindergarten? Is that a fair question?
It is. I don't have my data with me. Kelly, do you have that number?
Two hundred and forty-two communities are tuition-free for full-day kindergarten.
That's in Massachusetts alone?
Massachusetts.
But, John, most of those are in urban areas or areas with low socioeconomic disadvantages, because they get funding from the state. They have kindergarten grants that they're eligible for.
I'm going to go answer.
So in part, then, that result is a direct result of economics rather than.
Correct.
Good pedagogy.
Right. It's, the state has grants available, has had since 2000, in an initiative to transition to full-day kindergarten, that they will pay for a certain dollar amount per classroom. The criteria for obtaining those grants, and which is why we don't qualify, is at least, in the last, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the last that I've looked at is that it's 35% of your students qualify for free and reduced lunch. So we do not qualify for any funding from the state in terms for any of our kindergarten programs.
Okay, thank you.
There's also 89 communities that do charge, just to give you that little, because there's still quite a few people that charge.
For full, charges for full day?
Full, full day, yes. I just want to.
But we currently charge for full day, right?
Yes.
We offer a free half-day.
Correct.
But the free, the full day is from, decided on by a lottery?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, I just throw that out in the interest of.
No, absolutely. And, and all of that information is going to be provided in more detail at the forum.
All right.
We did touch on some of those numbers at the last parent forum, but we're going to get into more details with that. So, thanks for asking.
Very good, thank you.
I have a question for you. When, and this is just the structure of the kindergarten committee, when you make your recommendation to us, are you going to be also providing a report?
Yes.
On why, okay.
Just making sure.
Can you get the report ahead, though? The report's going to be ahead of time, right?
Oh, yes.
You'll get it in your packet.
No, we'll, yes, we'll get it before.
Yeah, maybe more than a couple days. That's my point, though, a couple days to read, read something is not necessarily sufficient.
Perfect. All right, great, thank you.
Already working on it, Jim.
Thanks.
Picked up the funds and everything.
Then I'll worry about the funds.
All right, Liz, on to you.
Okay, we have one policy that we would like to bypass a 30-day waiting period. It's a procure for purchasing goods, and basically, it's a law that just came in September from the Office of Inspector General, basically just changing monetary amounts for, for rent. So, for example, it's in section, or chapter 30B, and it's going from one cent from, it used to be $4,999 to $9,999. And then another section, it goes from then, $10,000 to $24,099. So, I'd like a motion to.
Okay.
Any question?
They want to hear the motion.
Whoever wants it. I move on the recommendation of the policy subcommittee that the school committee approve policy regulation DJ dash R, procedure for purchasing goods as presented, and waive the 30-day waiting period as specified in policy BGB, policy adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? And just so the community is aware, although we do try and more often than not succeed in, you know, putting policies on the website for 30 days, when it's a matter of adjusting to law, and we have a specific time period in which we can do it, we tend to waive the policy. We will also have an additional policy on fingerprinting coming down the line. So that'll be another instance where, more often than not, the guidance offered by the state or MSB or NISC will be provided within days of the law coming into action. So keep that on your radar. All right, so a motion on the table, and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Great, moving on to the approval of warrants.
Okay. I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2201 of the general operating fund for fiscal year 2014, dated 15 November 2013, in the amount of $284,757.71.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Seven oh. Four guards sign up. I'm just going to give you this one. Okay, I move the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2201 of the school lunch fund for fiscal year 2014, dated 15 November 2013, in the amount of $135,319.91.
Second.
Thank you.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
All right.
And a motion carries seven oh.
And that's it, two batches.
All right, moving on to the approval of minutes. Can I have a motion on the minutes from October 15?
I move that school committee approve the minutes to the October 15, 2013 school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any corrections or further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? The motion carries. Seven oh.
I didn't vote, I was in there.
Oh, any extensions? One. Okay, so six zero one. Can I have a motion on the executive session minutes from October 15, and I would request that these be approved but not released?
I move that school committee approve and not release, but not release.
You can just say approve.
Approve. The executive session minutes to October 15, 2013, school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any corrections or further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor? And a motion carries. Any extensions? Same meeting.
I'm just raising my hand.
All right, so we have 601. A motion on the minutes from October 28?
I move that school committee approve the minutes to October 28, 2013, school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion carries. Seven oh. And finally, can I have a motion on the minutes from October 30?
I move that school committee approve the minutes to October 30, 2013, school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? All abstaining?
That wasn't there.
Um, great. So that passed, 601, I believe. Uh, great.[1752.26]